This is our, this is our meeting. I'm signed in as M. Okay. Um, let's start with the pleasurable allegiance of your leaders, Brian, please.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its republic to sayings, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as long.
Just need to make a couple of slight adjustments to the agenda. Uh, the first is that there will not be an executive session following this public meeting tonight. Uh, the second is that, uh, Mr. Oda would like to make a statement at this time.
I want to announce effective immediately, I am vacating my position on the school committee. Because as of tomorrow, I won't be a citizen of Marblehead anymore. Moving back out my hometown, the house that I lived in all these years, the owner passed away. And went to probate court last year and they finally got it through probate. And the executor has decided to sell the house that I'm in. So I am vacating. I have not resigned. So I wanted to say thank you to everyone. It's been a pleasure working with the school committee. I've made many friends and associates. It's been great and I'm gonna solely miss this. And so with that, I'll bid a fair adieu. Thank you, Jake. Al, it's been a pleasure.
Same here, Brian. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks for having me.
Yes.
My just sir.
Appreciate you again. It's been a pleasure bringing us back from the frankly. Thank you. Thank you for all your help and support.
Okay, the next order of business is to again, um, look at filling our secretarial position. Uh, and I think, um, Henry, you were going to do some investigating if you could.
Sure. Yeah, I did call the state ethics office. Uh, I tried to get a written response. They take about thirty days. So according to them, the phone call is just as functional, but essentially they said that there's, there's no issue with me holding the secretary position. Provided that in an instance where I would need to recuse, recuse myself, which would be if we were discussing pay for part-time substitutes. In, in this case, uh, that I would need to recuse myself if someone else would need to temporarily take over the secretary role for that. But that I could still, uh, release the minutes. Uh, and, and so if, if if everyone is fine with possibly temporarily taking over that role while I leave, then, then I'm happy to accept the secretary.
Okay. Could I just, could I make a comment? Um, and the, the, there may be other instances other than that. I mean, maybe still better recusing anyhow, like for instance, like possibly when my evaluation comes up, there may be areas where I receive the, you know, the staff in the district, it may be times there. So I just wanna be, I just wanna mention it because there may be times that we're not thinking of, that we have to like just.
Yes. Thank you, Johnny. I, 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 I pointed out one instance, but there are.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure.
Yes, it's good to be clear on that. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good. Um, I guess then I'm looking for a motion to appoint Henry as our secretary.
Same.
Um, so I, I, um, I just, I'm looking for a motion. Oh, so moved. I'm sorry. During second, I've seen your lips say so. Uh, second.
Second.
Okay. Um, okay, well, we'll go to vote. Um, Jen?
No.
Okay, Henry?
Uh, yes.
Uh, eight.
Yes.
Uh, Al Williams in favor. Uh, so three to one, uh, the motion passes. Uh, congratulations. Um, and the one thing I do, do just wanna say, 'cause I think there's been some confusion, at least when I was secretary, is that um, I would like the secretary to assume, I think I said this at the last meeting, to assume responsibility for taking minutes also at this meeting. In addition to executive session. And obviously, we'll work out something if there's an up where you need to recuse yourself.
Yep.
Okay. Um, we will move on to commendations.
So I think I would like to commend Brian Oda for his service to the school committee and his service to the school district as principal and assistant principal. And we, I, I will miss working. Thank you, Brian.
Yes. As Brian said, well stated. Um, I have one. Um, there's a Margaret Voss Howard Teacher Recognition Award is presented annually to one teacher in Marblehead and one in Salem. As a representative of all the excellence dedicated teachers in the community who make a difference to children every day. Uh, this year's recipient is Margaret Voss Howard, um, from Marblehead. I'm sorry, the recipient of that award is Katie. I'm sorry if I mispronounced his name.
A Bear.
A Bear, thank you. So Katie A Bear from Veterans Middle School, who is known for her unwavering dedication, creative spirit, and profound impact on students and colleagues alike. So congratulations to her. Sounds very well deserved.
Um, I have a commendation as well, um, which is for the Friends of the Marblehead Public Schools, who celebrated their thirty-fifth anniversary this year. They have donated an enormous amount of time and energy and resources to our district. I want to commend the Friends and all the people who work with and support that organization.
Okay. Any others?
I just, I'd like to just reiterate, um, Jen's, uh, thoughts on Brian, you know, as, as a as a superintendent has been here a year, he's part of my, you know, hiring team. And, um, I wanna say that it was, it was a pleasure working with him through that. He was very supportive when he came down to Swansea when they visited. Um, he's been, uh, he's met with me on a, uh, regular basis and asked very poignant department questions. We had a lot of good dialogue and, um, I just think he was a really good, um, solid kinda member of the committee. So I appreciate his support from last year. So I wish him well in his new endeavor. So. Thank you.
Sheet for public comment?
Do you wanna?
Okay. Okay, up first, Jonathan.
I just wanna remind folks, uh, the adherence to the free comment, please.
So I just wanna start by saying, um, it's how I'm gonna reach out to myself and Julia, um, Ferrera and ask if, uh, we would, um, provide a joint statement to the public in regard to, um, you know, things here in Marblehead. I thought it was a great idea and I appreciate, um, uh, I appreciate the thoughts and efforts. And I think, uh, I think it's a great way to start off the school year. So I just wanna share that. I'm gonna start reading and then we're gonna kinda share. We all get a, a part in this. Uh, Julia does endorse it. She, she has a family commitment. So that's why she's not here to, um, partake. So I should, uh, the joint statement from the N E A leadership, the superintendent and assistant superintendent of teaching and learning. We would like to jointly reaffirm that all curriculum materials used in Marblehead Public Schools are selected through a clearly defined and rigorous process that prioritizes academic integrity, alignment with state standards, and the diverse needs of our students. Many national and regional organizations produce educational materials intended to support teaching and learning. Resources from outside organizations are not automatically adopted or implemented in Marblehead classrooms. Like any instructional material, they must go through the district's curriculum review and approval process. This includes careful vetting for educational value, age appropriateness, and alignment with district goals or values in the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks.
Resources from these organizations are not automatically adopted or implemented in Marblehead classroom. Like any instructional material, they must go through the district's curriculum review and approval process. This includes careful vetting for education value, age appropriateness, and alignment with the district's goals or values in the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. We are aware that the National Education Association, N E A, recently paced public contention following proposal brought forward in its annual representative assembly to end its relationship with the A D L. As part of its standard governance procedures, the N E A executive committee conducted a required review and a broader consultation. The N E A board of directors ultimately voted not to adopt the proposal. N E A leadership has since reaffirmed the organization's commitment to combating antisemitism, anti-heresy, and all forms of discrimination, while continuing to engage in thoughtful dialogue across communities. Curriculum decisions in Marblehead are made independently and collaboratively by educators, administrators, and instructional leaders. They are informed by data, professional standards, and the needs of our students, not by the position of external organizations. Through the partnership between the Office of Teaching and Learning and the Professional Development Committee, we ensure that all training and instructional materials are selected to enhance learning, foster inclusion, and support the whole child.
We remain committed to the transparent, inclusive, and student-centered approach to curriculum development and implementation. We appreciate the community's continued engagement and trust in this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if folks remotely would like to, uh, comment, please raise your hand.
Hi, Debbie Man. I'm here today because we can no longer afford to be reactive. We must be proactive. Antisemitism is not a distant threat. It is here, it is growing, and it is happening every single day. We are witnessing increasing verbal and physical attacks on Jews and Israelis around the world and in this country. Just this week, two Jewish women, along with two security guards, were murdered at the Blackstone Building in New York City. One of them was actually my family friend. A mother of two shot in the lobby as she was leaving work. I watched on social media today as she is laid to rest. People aged fifteen to thirty-five saying they deserved it for being Jewish, working for Blackstone and the Rude and Management Company. In Brooklyn, a mom stormed the kosher restaurant two days ago, screaming, "Kill the Jews!", leaving diners bruised, bloodied, hospitalized, and traumatized. And actually, one had their ribs fractured. In Spain, last week, fifty Jewish kids aged ten to fifteen were moved from a flight. And while their Jewish, uh, twenty-one-year-old counselor was physically assaulted simply for being Jewish. It also turned out that the pilot of this flight was one of the teachers of the two terrorists that took down planes on nine eleven. We cannot pretend these acts of hate are isolated or irrelevant to our town. Whether or not these events make national headlines, their message is clear. Jewish people are being targeted and we need to act now. I am here to ask the committee to set a timeline to implement policies, education, consequences, and clear reporting systems addressing antisemitism in our schools and districts. We waited long enough. The Jewish community should not have to beg for our safety to be taken seriously. We should not have to keep explaining why our concerns matter. I thank the superintendent for making an antisemitism task force, which I am on, but we need to move faster. A survey was sent out to parents, teachers, and students, but it was at the end of the school year. Therefore, um, I think it will be sent out in the fall. I know schools need data, but the Jewish community knows the data. But we need actions now, not later. So why are we not moving faster? I provided the school committee and the super with a wonderful retreat for teachers and administration and administrators. I will leave some flyers here tonight, and if you have any questions, you can contact the host of the event. There's free registration through tomorrow. It's been out for about a month, but um, let me be clear, and I can only speak for a handful of proactive Jews and allies in this community. We will not back down from our ass. Uh, we will not back down from our tasks. We deserve to be heard and protected. We are proud of who we are, and we will not be silenced or ignored. We will not accept our children and teachers to be subjected to antisemitism.
That's three minutes, Sarah.
Okay. So let me just ask one thing. So I'm just asking the district act and, you know, set up by the next school committee, a plan of action as to what we're going to do for the fall.
Sarah, do you mind sending that, that electronic?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we have someone remotely. Yeah, yeah, Megan? Can you hear me? All right, I'm sorry. Can you, can you hear me now?
Now I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you, Sarah. Um, thank you also for the superintendent. I'm as well on the anti-discrimination task force who will be dealing with antisemitism. Um, like Sarah just said, we as Jews have experienced a very heightened antisemitism. And this summer, these past few weeks, we have literally been attacked everywhere in the world. Um, we are also being attacked inside the educational system. It has happened on our campuses, and it is happening now in K through twelve. In fact, it has already happened as we saw in the curriculum that we did change, which I'm extremely proud of. When this, when this board, when this school committee adopted the proclamation not to adopt antisemitic curriculum coming from the M T A, it was one of the righteous, justice, seeking justice, and correct thing to do. We cannot fill our students with hate. We have now two students in Marblehead, my two kids, David and Eve, are in Israel right now. A couple days ago, they, they wanted to go to Jerusalem. And I was thinking whether I should allow it or not. And I said, you know what? Go. We cannot tell a Jew not to go visit the Western Wall. That is insane. They went to the Western Wall. There was a siren, a rocket hit from the Houthis went all the way from, from Huthim to, to Israel, from Yemen to Israel. They had to go down to the bomb shelter. It was actually the tunnels under, under the Western Wall. People were there singing and then coming out. We as Jews are being targeted everywhere. We are being targeted in our homeland, and we're targeted now on the streets of Western society in Europe, in America. And we are also being targeted in our educational system against our children. It is imperative that we in Marblehead, especially in Marblehead, with such a big Jewish population, in a population that has fought for anti-discrimination, that has fought for diversity. We have to take an action to ensure that this type of curriculum does not enter our school. Now, I saw there was a, a, we sent out as the committee, as the anti-discrimination committee, a questionnaire. And a lot of people said that they have, they have physically and with words experienced antisemitism almost once a week. And there was one person that I just wanna say, even though I'm running out of time, who said the following. It was a freshman boy in the soccer team who experienced antisemitism, which some of you know about. And he said that his boy got more support and love from his teammates and his friends than he got from the teachers and administration. And I think that is something as the school committee and the superintendent and our teachers need to take into account and see how can we also, of course, help our children that are suffering from antisemitism, either from their peers, from teachers, or from the curriculum.
Excuse me, that's, that's three minutes.
I, I am done. Yeah, the, the last thing I just wanted to say was thank you. I wanna thank the school committee for always being proactive with anything that has to do with antisemitism. You have no idea how happy I am to go to things that have to do with fighting antisemitism, and I come with a happy story. I come with the story of a town in a school committee that fights actively against it. So thank you.
All right, uh, that will bring public comment to a close. Next on the agenda, superintendent updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so my, my updates are, are minimal as the summertime, but there are definitely things going on in, in Marblehead during the summer. Um, summertime is a busy time of the year, despite there not being, being no school in session. There's a lot of planning with our admin team and strategizing for professional development procedures and practices that take place during July and August. Our admin retreat is on August fifth and sixth, where I will share expectations. We will review processes and procedures, do some team building, some training, alignment of philosophies across buildings, so that we can hit the ground running with the staff and students returning. Our new staff orientation is August twenty-second, where we welcome several new teachers, instructional assistants, um, and a host of other positions to the district, along with two new team chairs, and officially welcome our vets principal, Matt Labangi. Uh, I say officially because that's the day we, like, all get together and welcome back all, all my new folks. Um, and then on our August twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, we have P D days, where the first day I welcome the staff back and share items of interest, set the stage for the school year. The building principals will meet with their staff. Um, departments of grade level teams will meet in several trainings, providing many revolving rounds, special ed. Uh, that's, that's obviously something we've been talking about for last year. And, uh, you know, the plan is to get a lot of that training in, um, beginning this school year. So I'm excited about having those two days, um, beginning this school year, getting talked about. Um, and having the two days to react and get necessary P D and housekeeping out of the way is important to starting the school year off on the right foot. We will welcome our students back on August twenty-seventh. Uh, facilities projects are moving forward. The painting of the pack in the foyer at Vets is complete and it looks great. It's really awesome. It's all bright and shiny. And the rear upholstered seats are scheduled to be back soon. I believe they said the week of the eighteenth, so, um, it's not back before the twenty-fifth. Maybe has standing only at the pack for my welcome back. We'll figure something out. Um, but I, I'm pretty sure that they're gonna be back in. That's the plan. Uh, playground resurfacing at Glover is, uh, in, along with a new piece of equipment, thanks to the P T O, is being worked on. Um, that's all kinda in the works. That's, um, also slated to be done before the kids get back. Uh, the H V, uh, H V system and, uh, Glover is also being replaced and expanded, so they get the old units off the roof, they put a new units on. We're kinda connecting everything. It's gonna actually make what was intended to work properly, work properly. And there were some areas added, um, we talked about that. But as well, so many splits have been installed in Vets and the high schools as well. Uh, we received delivery of the first electric transport van today, um, and, uh, which is great. It has some marble, Marblehead logo on it. It's really cool. We checked, actually, Jen was at the, at the, um, office today for another meeting and she had to see it's really, really nice, beautiful, uh, electric van, um, which is nice. Um, it's really kind of one step in the direction of, you know, Green Marblehead Initiative that we have in town. So excited about that. It's gonna be used for, you know, industrial transportation, special ed students, or the students that may need, um, transportation where we can't always pick the big buses. So very excited about that. Uh, let's see, the school board at Village is finally arriving tomorrow, uh, being stored until we can get it, um, installed. Uh, that'll be done shortly. The trees have all been trimmed back, the lighting, um, is gonna help us, uh, set that, set the sign in. Uh, so that's awesome. And then general resurfacing of floors, painting, et cetera, that happens at all schools, kinda freshening up is also happening on the district. So just wanted to share that. Um, we do have a Plan B that has been established in case the strike continues with the waste management. Um, I know that's kinda, you know, it's on some people's mind about, you know, we're bringing things the way to the transfer station now, but obviously we don't have students and staff and everybody in the building yet. So we do have a, a Plan B, and we're hoping that this is usually before school starts, but if not, we, we will be prepared in case. So that's still going on. And finally, our E S Y program, along with our summer literacy and math programs, have been going well overall. And wrapping up, I think, uh, this week, so literacy, math, I think, ended today in, uh, special ed, E S Y programming, it says, ends next week. So thank you to all the staff who have worked diligently to ensure the programs are in place for our students, and they, they've gotten what they need over the summer, summer weeks. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, the next item, uh, was also for John, and, uh, update on the anti-discrimination.
Oh, yeah.
Committee, please.
Anti-discrimination committee update. Uh, so this is actually timely, 'cause we just had a, a couple conversations about this. So, uh, created anti-discrimination committee last year. Um, it currently consists of three community members, um, two of which you've heard from this evening, uh, three administrators and three teachers. And then I've also elicited, um, feedback from students. So high school students have been involved, and I've been meeting with them separately to garner, um, input and ideas. That's mainly because of the timing. I tried to get the, the two groups together, but a lot of times in the afternoon, when I meet with the adults, the kids are at jobs and sports, et cetera, and after-school stuff. So uh, I've been meeting with them during the day. I'm gonna continue to do that, um, over the, in the fall and into the school year. I'm gonna work with Michelle Carlson, Dr. Carlson, to set up, uh, set up time for me to do that on a regular basis with the children, the students. Um, and I think that, uh, and then I'm gonna also set up ongoing, hopefully monthly meetings with the, with the committee, uh, so that we can get going. I, you know, I hear loudly and clearly that we need to move forward. Um, it's, uh, not, it's not where I want it to be either. So I, I have heard that input and feedback, and, uh, my plan is to continue to uh, the surveys that went out were definitely late in the game, didn't get real good response. I, you know, I won't own that, and I, I'm gonna send them out differently. Just, and really, you know, it's always conversations while the survey's saying, you know, uh, you know, uh, you know, helpful and not helpful. The survey's really just to garner some, like, uh, really some really good information about, you know, how frequently and how often are there issues of discrimination in the district and, uh, you know, what catchment area is, to what degree, that will help inform how we
Providing many revolving rounds, special ed, that's, that's obviously something we've been talking about for last year and. Uh, you know, the plan is to get a lot of that training in, um, beginning this school year. So I'm excited about having those two days, um, at the beginning of the school year. And talked about, um, and having the two days to reaccompany and get necessary PD and housekeeping out of the way is important to start the school year off on the right foot. We will welcome our students back on August twenty seventh. Uh, facilities projects are moving forward, the painting of the pack and the foyer at Vets is complete and it looks great, it's really awesome and it's all bright and shiny, um. And the rear upholstered seats are scheduled to be back soon, I believe they said the week of the eighteenth, so. Um, so not back before the twenty fifth, maybe has standing only at the pack for my welcome back, and we'll figure something out. Um, but I, I'm pretty sure that they're gonna be back again, that's the plan. Uh, playground resurfacing at Glover is, uh, in along with a new piece of equipment, thanks to the PTO. Is being worked on, um, that's all kind of in the works, that's, um, also slated to be done before the kids get back. The HVAC, HVAC system and Glover is also being replaced and expanded, so they get the old units off the roof, they put a new units on. Or kind of connecting everything, it's gonna actually make what was intended to work properly, work properly, and there was some areas added, um, we talked about that. But as well, so many splits have been installed in Vets and the high schools as well. Uh, we received delivery of the first electric transport van today, um, and, uh, which is great, it has some marble, Marblehead logo on it, it's really cool. We checked, actually, Gemma's at the, at the, um, office today for another meeting and she had to see it's really, really nice, beautiful, uh, electric van. Um, which is nice, um, it's really kind of one step in the direction of, you know, green Marblehead initiative that we have in town, so. Excited about that, it's gonna be used for, you know, industrial transportation, special ed students, or the students that may need, um, transportation where we can't always take the big buses, so. Very excited about that. Uh, let's see, the school board at Village is finally arriving tomorrow, uh, being stored until we can get it, um, installed. Uh, that'll be done shortly, the trees have all been trimmed back, the lighting, um, is gonna help us, uh, set that. Set the sign in, so that's awesome, and then general resurfacing of floors, painting, et cetera, that happens at all schools, kind of freshening up is also happening on the district, so. Just wanted to share that. Um, we do have a plan B that has been established in case the strike continues for the waste management. Um, I know that's kind of, you know, it's on some people's mind about, you know, we're bringing things the way of the transfer station now, but obviously we don't have. Students and staff and everybody in the building sets, we do have a, a, a plan B and we're hoping that business is usually before school starts, but if not. We will be prepared in case, so, at least that's still going on. And finally, our E S Y program, along with our summer literacy and math programs have been going well overall. And wrapping up, I think, uh, this week, so literacy, math, I think, ended today in the, um. Special ed, E S Y programming is, is next week. So thank you to all the staff who have worked diligently to ensure the programs. Are in place for our students and they, they've gotten what they need over the summer, summer weeks. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, the next item, uh, was also for you, John, and, uh, update on the anti discrimination.
Oh, yeah.
Committee, please.
Anti discrimination committee update. Uh, so this is actually timely, because we just had a, a couple conversations about this, so, uh, created anti discrimination committee last year, um. It currently consists of three community members, um, two of which you've heard from this evening, uh, three administrators, three teachers, and then. I've also elicited, um, feedback from students, so high school students have been involved and I've been meeting with them separately. To garner, um, input and ideas, that's mainly because of the timing, I tried to get the, the two groups together, but a lot of times in the afternoon when I meet with the adults. The kids are at jobs and sports, et cetera, and after school stuff, so. Uh, I've been meeting with them during the day, I'm gonna continue to do that, um, over the, in the fall and into the school year, I'm gonna work with Michelle Carlson, Dr. Carlson to. Set up, uh, set up time for me to do that on a regular basis with the children, the students, um, and I think that, uh. And then I'm gonna also set up ongoing, hopefully monthly meetings with the, with the committee. Uh, so that we can get going, I, you know, I hear loudly and clearly that we need to move forward, um, it's, uh. Not, it's not where I want it to be either, so I, I have heard that input and feedback and, uh, my plan is to continue to. Uh, the surveys that went out were definitely late in the game, didn't get real good response, I, you know, I won't own that, and I, I'm gonna send them out differently, just. And really, you know, it's always conversations while the survey saying, you know, uh, you know, uh, you know, helpful, not helpful. The survey is really just to garner some, like, uh, really some really good information about, you know, how frequently and how often are there. Issues of discrimination in the district and, uh, you know, what catchment area is, to what degree, that will help inform how we move forward with the committee. So, um, the overarching goal of the committee is to gain a deeper understanding of the issues of discrimination within our schools. And how we can develop ways to address them in proactive ways. And the backdrop to all the discussions is how we as educators and caregivers help each other. And our students exist in our community, ensuring that people are treated fairly and respectfully, that's the, you know, Evan keeps saying, what's the goal of the committee, that's the, that's the ultimate goal of the committee. Is to, is to, is to create, um, a school culture where students can, uh, learn from each other, can, um. Be open and honest about when they're feeling, um, discriminated against and have. Safe, safe adults to go to and also be able to have conversations with one another. This is not an overnight fix, will never be an overnight fix, um. But I'm confident that, um, all the folks are involved, we've also listed a lot of feedback and resources and. Um, ideas for other members of the community that aren't on the committee, I met today with a member of the community. I've done that several times with other folks, so, you know, the plan is to kind of, you know, bring folks in when and where needed into the committee, so it won't be a stagnant committee, we will kind of. Move forward with changing it up as, as needed, you know, right now there is a, uh, a larger focus on antisemitism, but it's really an anti discrimination committee, so we need to. Address racism, we need to address anti, um, L B G T Q plus, xenophobia, any, anything that, anything that, um. Affects this, you know, students and staff in a discriminatory way, um, is, is gonna be hopefully addressed. Now, the committee isn't there, just to wait to match what it fixes, it's really there to hear, to listen to, and to develop solutions so that we can really change. Culture in Marblehead, that's, that's the plan, so, that's the update right now, um, starting in the fall, we're gonna try to meet, I'm gonna try to work out monthly meetings with the. Larger group and, uh, to the students in an, uh, way, and I'll report back out to the committee as, as we kind of move forward and. Get some tasks generated and, um, some feedback and information to share that's pertinent, so I will do that as we get into the fall. So I have, Mr. Chairman.
We're gonna check the next time.
So, yeah, so the, um, so there was a request by Sarah about, um, just sharing information with Dr. Mary Bar Halpern. Um, she's, she's a, uh, Jewish community member who does do, um, some trainings in, in, uh. Provides some resources around trauma, um, in regard to, uh. Some students and, uh, I mean, our, our family members and children, whoever has experienced trauma in mainly in, um, in the end of antisemitic. Issues, um, but I think she has a lot, lots to offer in, in, in regard to that and how, how does, um. How does trauma reactive things also, um, help in other areas, but mainly in the antispex, so, um. Uh, her, her biography and some, uh, information we share with the committee, and I believe there's a video, do we have a video, I didn't get that, but I. So there is a video that we're gonna, um, just share that I think just speaks a little bit, just, um, about kind of some of the work that she does. And the, and the thought process here is to kind of hear, um, and. Listen to what she has to say and does it make sense to bring her into district in some capacity, and, and my plan is to bring this information back to the. Anti discrimination, um, committee and kind of talk about and say, does it make sense to have her come in? If so, in what capacity, and targeting what, you know, adults, students, caregivers, all of the above, in what order? Um, anytime we have any kind of PD, regardless of what it is about, we have to decide what makes sense. What, um, doesn't make sense, how does it make sense, when do we put into place, at what level, and to what degree? Um, professional development is always nice when it's embedded, um, more so, it's more, more effective, we, we find that with, you know, curriculum and. Trainings that we do, you know, the way finding curriculum we did is that initial training, then there's always embedded stuff so that people are learning, um, so. Uh, Dr. Bar Halpern is, you know, maybe a one-off kind of thing, which is okay if that's what we decide, but then how do we. Maybe take some of the information, transfer it to what we're doing at the school, so that's kind of overarching backdrop to why, why this is on the agenda tonight. Did I do that justice, Sarah?
Do you want me to read her biography, like the short part of it?
Um, that's up to the chair, I, they have the information, but I, I don't know, I don't know. Yeah.
That's fine.
Um, so why Mary isn't here is she's actually traveling, but I wanted to get it on the agenda, so. Um, I did an interview with her yesterday and we recorded it for everybody. Um, so, Dr. Mary Bar Halpern is the Director of Trauma Training and Services at Parents for Peace and Lieutenant of Psychology at Harvard Medical School. Where she supervises psychology interns and psychiatry residents. With two decades of experience across clinical, academic, tech support, uh, tech startup. And policy settings, she has developed global training programs and public health initiatives focused on resilience, healing and recovery. Especially in the face of extremism, identity-based violence and chronic stress. The video.
Appreciate that, yeah, thank you, I didn't know how much detail, I, I hadn't seen the video, so I don't know. Can, can you cue that video?
Well.
Yeah, please. Right.
So, did you make a lot of Frank?
So, I became an advocate, I've been asked to testify by the State House and Education Committee. On twenty twenty-three was about one thousand. Uh, so I became an agent, really, keeps working on, have furthered on experiments, and actually enjoy in our process. The director of, uh, services, organizations, uh, private, uh, persons, uh. Uh, my colleagues are informing me, it's, it's already had its, so to work for, I think they need to, you know, helping. Um, both serve, certainly, certainly, trying to get out of cycle state. So, with that, I understand, because there's certain organizations, they actually are providing a lot of, um, organization. To schools, all over the, uh, city, in fact, college board, and for us, if there was any more trouble over there. And that's just as well, all our students, and, uh, teachers. The first thing I mentioned in that is because our data shows that, and it senses, that, you know, already. Meaning that any thoughtful will get, doesn't matter if it's a far off, or far right. Each show, and other, actually, a lot of such a role for the US and world, in antisemitism. So one of the things that I'm trying to, is actually that. Actually, now, we have a, but every point is effective, because there is actually, that everyone also feels long and long. So, it's sort of, they also say, because they see that, that, that's just about a second. It's also to show how every, our work is, one, two, are keys. So I always feel a question, your organization, for example, the last three and a half months, last month, yes. If you do, I'll address it, and operating. Really, why, 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 is it actually, is that? And then, they, they get in this convention, they, they, they run it. And it was, uh, our, we, because these are candidates, they're strange, and most of them are. That is not an equal balance, you know, and people who are, and, 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 and. Uh, so, it's. Uh, one of the, they, we, right now, on, well. This sixty-third, uh, organization, it's, for example, in. It's about, uh. Especially, what, she was, about, creating choosers, and, 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 and. Any group, being, balanced way, whole way, than ever. So, part of it is. And being less, well, about, how to operate, and be successful. And then, I was provided. We, very. So it's not a shame, there is, for you. And what is. So, the hope is that last, whole system where the four is, and you can, that is, great. Here, we're doing, then, is this. Uh, so, again, we are very, as long as we're making the way. For. Maybe we'll be more just. So, that gives me a piece of my lunch, and indeed, we'll be ready for, um, something, sort of, in, for, one, activity. For that, we are trusting it, right? What is that? The last, it says, the, 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 say. Or. Or, 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 yeah. Yeah, well, that's here. Not in a way that's the, it's, it's, Jewish, it's, it's. Being, it's not just, it's just. Or white. They actually, there. They actually cover their. Would not rate. It's just because we're not white. That was quite testing. They're not white. Not a lot of people. All different. Oh. So. Just like any other. Pretty difficult. That's why I. It can be made these weeks and like lessons. Probably not use the voice. Over spent. Then. Or energy. What is that? Yes. Critical thinking and I guess. So. Oh, what have you, Sarah? I'm gonna just say less than four cents. Thinking really. It's all time for me. We need. On because it seems. Feels so. And. I would love to start with these. They, as studies show that. For I highly support. Already worked. And. Always make a prediction. Wonder. Pretty cool. I've been you have my values. If anybody has access to. For. Be very great. But if anybody has. Question, please don't refuse your mind. Then. Be responsive. Smith said that. Wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah.
I could.
Okay, I get the gist of it. I think. I think, um, you know, again, uh, on the back end of this, we'll have further conversations with Sarah and the rest of the committee. Um, I'll likely reach out to Dr. Um. Our help work as well and just kind of get some further information, um. Just to see what makes the most sense. I heard a lot of, you know, positive things out of there. There's some things that, you know, may, may or may not fit with what, you know, how we, how we operate, but, you know. I'm always open to conversation, the resources, the. The opportunities, so. It goes next steps.
And when she's not traveling, is she local?
Uh, she is local. She's in Munich.
Oh, great.
Um, so she is local. She's traveling right now, but she'll be back in like a week and she has some traveling. In the fall to Canada. Their areas.
Great. Thank you for doing that. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
She has to read all those resources that I said also.
Most of it, yes. All right.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Um. Yeah, thank you, John. Thank you, Sarah. Um. We received an email from the Friends of Marblehead Public Schools. Their board has unanimously voted to approve two thousand five hundred dollars worth of school supplies to each of our schools. So I'm looking for a motion to accept this donation. So.
No. Now.
That's a little.
Later in the agenda. You taking this out of order?
Did it get moved?
I have it, um. Yeah, we were on consent action. I scheduled bills next.
And where was the? Yeah, I could.
Uh, the, the donation is down under four. E four.
Okay. Well, do we wanna? All right. All right, um, let's do schedule bills in first. Um.
So if it's a consent agenda, you can vote them all.
Right. Um. All right, which is what we're doing in this case with the schedule of bills. Um. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the identified schedule of bills that's located in our shared drive totaling one million. Two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and nine cents. So.
Second.
Sure. Uh, Jack.
Are you calling for a vote?
There was a motion was made unless there's discussion. Yeah, so now I am looking for a vote. The motion was made and seconded.
In, in favor.
Thank you.
In favor.
No, Williams in favor. See, all right, so meeting minutes. So Jen, I actually have a question for you. Is it typically? We make the motion that we discuss if there's edits.
So usually in the consent agenda, that all these, I could have voted this whole thing in one.
Right.
So. But we're not, so, um.
I didn't want, because of this item, I wasn't sure how to address, because I, I think there may be some edits we may want to make.
Yeah, so usually you would vote it as. All of them and then during the deliberation, if anyone has anything they can bring up and that can be changed. Uh, I do think just in the future, like we're voting. Not draft, we're voting the, like. I don't know how, we can figure out the wording, like. We're voting the actual meeting minutes, not the draft meeting minutes. So with this vote. They will be the actual minutes.
Right, so they're currently in draft form and this, and then, and then the vote or potential edits would then. If passed within the final.
Guess so, yeah. Normally it would.
Right, take the draft, you know, edits in the draft would be made, the draft watermark would be removed.
Right, so, but, okay, I just, I don't, in the, so in the past, we have voted draft minutes. Or we've said drafts will go in as a draft and then these are actually the fall, whatever, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. Um, so, yeah, we can probably make a motion for all of them and if anyone has any changes and. Then it would be approved based on those changes if. It's approved based on changes.
That sounded like a motion to me. Is that motion or?
Uh, sure. Motion to approve meeting minutes two twenty-seven, three, six, three, twenty. Four, three, four, seventeen, five, one, five, fifteen, sixteen.
I'll, I'll second that motion. Uh, any discussion on these, on these minutes? So. I think they were fairly good. I, I guess what I have a question about is there were. There's, in these draft minutes, there are, uh, motions and seconded that don't have the actual person that did that. It just has kind of a seconded by.
Yeah, so the secretary would normally, you know.
Fill in the blanks.
Okay.
Fix that.
Can we approve them pending, you know, pending those fixes?
It, sure. I mean, we can do whatever we want. If that's the will of the committee, um, you could amend the motion.
So we need to amend the motion so that we can make, that it would incorporate, um.
Yeah.
Edits that we discuss at this time.
Do you have the specifics or? Do you have somewhere? Do you have?
I do.
So you're probably.
Do I just?
Well. You know. Well, that would be the will of the committee, but if you. You could, one option would be to make an, to amend the motion. To approve the draft minutes, um. With changes that you've highlighted or fixes that you've highlighted. That the secretary will confirm.
Okay. Um. I will so move that if you have that favor. Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, look me for a second.
Seconding.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, uh, do a roll call, Jen.
In favor?
Henry?
In favor.
Kate?
I'm going to abstain because I was not on the committee during which I'm is meaningful help.
Uh. Al Williams, uh, in favor. Um, I do want to point this out because our previous chair did, uh. It's my understanding that the policy does, if you are not at a meeting, you are still allowed to. Vote on it. I do agree. I, I abstain sometimes because I feel uncomfortable if I wasn't at the meeting, but that just want to let you know people have that option.
And that's Robert's fault, not.
I don't believe you. Okay, thank you. Okay.
So that's three to, oh, three to zero minutes.
Yes. All right, um. So next item was for you, Superintendent.
Yes, back to me. Yes.
Back to you.
Um, so we, we decided we, we should probably talk about the federal and the state funding, just some of the issues that have, uh, transpired. So obviously the, the federal grant funding that was frozen. By the administration. Is, has apparently been unfrozen, although there's a lot of fanfare about that, so I, I'm still a little cautiously optimistic, um. However, I just wanted to share with the committee. The grant funding that was affected by the freeze. Was a total of approximately seventy thousand dollars to, to, to the district. So not a huge amount of money, but still things that, you know, we used to pay for like mentoring stipends and things like that. So I was happy to hear that it's unfrozen and we'll, we'll continue to monitor that situation. And if there's any changes that need to be made to the disguise or any changes, I'll bring it back to the committee to discuss. So I want to keep my fingers crossed that, that, you know, that the funding does move back our way as hasn't, as has been indicated. I put this kind of as a. Ticket item before the. Funds were unfrozen again, so, um, but yeah, we're talking, I think it was like sixty-eight thousand and change. So I said approximately seventy thousand. Um, the bigger piece to me is actually the state grant funding, um, and I think. Um, I'm just gonna have this conversation a little bit out aloud and maybe unpopular to some folks in town, but I have to have it, um, anyway. So some significant school grant funding is contingent upon the compliance with three A. Programming for our students is at risk, so I'm hopeful that the compliance is in the works. I share this because. Quite frankly, when, um, the vote for the three A went the way it went. It, um. Significantly jeopardized our Mecca programming. Our Mecca weapon is tied directly to three A. The three A compliance that we're supposed to be under. Um, and just to put that in perspective, that's five hundred thousand dollars. Give or take, um, that five hundred thousand dollars provides. The needed transportation programming for Mecca students. So quite frankly. Um. We, we could be in some significant trouble with the Mecca fund. Now, I will say. That we got the grant in. It made it in under the rate, under the, the deadline and made it in under when the vote was, the second vote was taken at the second meeting. Um, and it got approved and we pushed it through with a little bit of cajoling with the state. And we got, we got it approved, we got the funding. It's. Sitting there. Uh, for us to access. So. It's a big sigh of relief because there's about three days worth of me not sleeping and, and having, um, some nauseous thoughts about how we're gonna, um. Tell everybody in the Mecca program that they no longer have a school here in Marblehead, um, and I'm not being dramatic, but I'm telling, saying what is actually, um, accurate. So right now, we're okay. So I want. For those that might be listening and writing things in the newspaper, we're okay in the Mecca program. Now we have the funding for this year. But. You know, I have to understand as a community. That that grant funding is contingent upon three A compliance in the district. So however that works out with the town, I don't think that folks really. Yes, I, I certainly didn't understand that, that it was tied to it. So, um, it was kind of in the fine print. It wasn't in the grant applications. It's kind of on the side in the thing and it just kind of came up in a by the by conversation. Um. I spoke with the town administrator. He was not aware either. Um. So by no fault of, you know, um, really anybody other than happens here. So. S- some of the other grant funding, I don't know on the town side what, what the three A effects, but I'm just speaking for the schools. So the Mecca grant funding is directly tied to three A. Five hundred thousand dollars plus or minus. Um, we're okay for the school here. So that's, that's the message. Pathways and the innovations grant is also another grant that's tied directly to three A that we apply for and we generally get every year. And that's fifty thousand dollars. Um, it sounds like small potatoes, but it's, it provides the resources for some of high school programming. Um, and as, as of this morning, we still don't have that funding released. It's approved on my end. And it's back with Desi waiting for approval. That deadline was kind of straddled the, um, the vote in the three A compliance deadline, which I think was June seventeenth, I think, um. So it straddled that, so we may not be getting that funding. Um, so again, it's not huge potatoes, but it's still fifty thousand dollars that we may not have because of the three A.
I think the compliance was moved to January.
Okay, so, but.
I should follow up.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Should be.
And that may, and that may be the case. I, I, I make mention of it because. Um, when I had the conversation with the town administrator, you know, he was having conversations with. Other folks around how, how we move forward with this. So I just want to make sure that everyone is aware that these, these are funding, um, sources that we rely on, um. And then there are other grants that we're unable to apply for and until our less, um, the town's equalizer three A. So I share that, uh, with folks, um, by way of just information sharing. So that's the status of the federal and state grants at this, at this time. If there's any changes, again, I will, I will bring that back to the committee. Um, that's where things stand at this moment.
Good. Thank you. Um, the next item was a roof project update.
And I can, I can do most of the date and then I think, you know, if there's any, uh, subcommittee folks that want to speak in, uh, so the roof update, um. Basically where we are is we have to do a pre, pre big qualification. Um, and what that means is, uh, there's a committee that, that has, that was named, um, to, uh. Look at the pre-qualified, uh, pre-qualification of the bidders. So, um, we have to have the schematic designer and the, um, OPM on that committee. So RDA and, um, and, uh, left field. Are the Raymond Design Associates in left field on the committee and then it's generally the facilities person and the finance person. So in our case, that we top logged it in, in my paper. So those four members are kind of outlined as part of who needs to be on that committee, um, and then. We had to have that information to them by Thursday, I think, so that they could, um, uh, put it on the central register. So this is part of the procurement law. So it goes on the central register saying that these are the members of the committee that will look at the pre-bidders for the roof. Um, and then it gets posted on the central register for two weeks. So I believe that brings us to August twenty-eighth. At the end of that posting, um, that committee, those four members of the committee will sit down. And go through the folks that have put in for pre-rea qualification. And it's really, really what it is. I, I know there's a lot of conversations that they need to be roof, roofing experts and the answer is really no, because this pre-bid piece is just really, do they have proper licenses, what experience they have? It's really this part of the process is to make sure that whoever's bidding on the project is, is a viable bidder, that they're not, that they're not non-responsible. So you have to be responsible, responsive bidder. And so the pre-bid qualification is just to make sure we don't get twenty people bidding and then you're going through and saying, oh my God, these ten people aren't even, can't even bid and you're wasting time. So this is kind of, that's what the pre-bid file. So once that takes place, the next big thing, next big piece is. Um, once they do the bids and they go off liquid and the, and the resurfacing, and then at that point after the bids, the bid process goes through on that part, then the next big decision is like, would are we surfacing? And as I mentioned earlier, when we make that decision, we make that decision, it, it can't have a whole, we're not, the timeline is going to be way too tight to have a whole lot of discussion about it. And once that happens, like the OPM, the schematic designer and the procurement process really kicks in. So it's, you know, this, they have scheduled events taking place. We're gonna have some conversations about what those schedules look like because I haven't been overly pleased at this point. Um, with the notifications of when, like, this was, this was. In my opinion, very last minute that we found out about this, having had this committee. So I, I will have those conversations as well. But once that's all scheduled out, they say. Here's the, here's the process. Here are, here's how long it takes. Here's when the meetings take place. Who's gonna get, what's the result of the meeting? And it's very prescribed. So I know there's still conversations about what kind of H fact system this, that. Honestly, the time for those discussions was passed. A long time ago, I, in my humble opinion, can't have conversations this far into the project and change, start changing. So. I'm just gonna share that every time I can because I think people, you know, get very passionate about what they want on the roof and how they want them to be, um. This is, you know, we inherited this and we're trying to move this, um, we're trying to move this project forward, um, and I think it's like, and folks have been doing a really good job. This subcommittee's been doing a good job pushing it through. So I feel good about where we are and I feel good about as long as everyone keeps in the timelines, we'll have the roof repaired on time of. Next summer, so. Um, that's where it stands at this point, but I'm happy to answer any questions. I think I threw a lot of stuff out there, but. If anything I can answer, I'll get the answer for you.
Good. All right, we'll move on to our next item. Um, so at the last meeting. Uh, there were policy updates that were brought to the committee. And, uh, I believe we, we, there was a motion that was passed, uh, around all of them except one. Related to student submission to educational surveys and research. Uh, I think specifically, uh, poll around opt-in and out surveys. And I believe, John, that, uh, you and Julia, we're gonna take a look at it a little bit more and get back to us around that.
Yes, we did. And then part of what we uncovered was that we had actually, this committee had actually already, um, so I understand we already voted on the MSC version of this, this policy a while ago and.
Right. No, it, it was the subcommittee that had voted.
Some.
So what I was saying is, I think. Proper governance is that it would go back to the policies.
So, so misstep and, and I'll only misstep because I think I, I, I thought we had kind of, I thought we were at a different point with the conversation. So. So here's the, so the policy that, um, I brought before the committee last, last time was not the MSC policy and that was, that, that was the part that I think, um, caused some extra confusion. The one that's on the table that I believe needs to go back to the subcommittee is the MSC version of the policy. To be considered, um. And then to move on, right? Isn't that, that's what this.
Well, the one that was submitted to us for tonight was not the MSC.
And originally, but then I hadn't switched.
Oh, you did. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't.
So, um. Yeah, exactly. So, so anyway, it, it was a little bit of a, a misstep, um, so I think.
Well, if you're presenting that one. Then yes, we could vote that because that was.
Yeah, I just, I just, after, after the conversation about having to go back to some of me, I just actually thought it probably better to have some committee versus me trying to. But not, but I, I think it's better to have a conversation with the subcommittee as we do with all the policies. So again. You know, I, I think, I think it ended up on the, on the agenda, um, not prematurely, we just. The, the committee changed and I think, you know, the policies subcommittee should probably look at that and make sure it's the right one that's coming. Or are the one that makes the most sense to come forward to the whole committee. Because I could, I can have a conversation, but then if it's still not the right, and it's got to go back to some committee again, anyway, I just, I don't know that it's, it's, uh, a good use of her time. It's kind of.
So it's currently residing kind of the ownership of it right now with the facilities. So, I'm sorry, the policy is subcommittee.
Uh, yeah.
Is that true? Okay.
Yeah.
And then. If changes are needed, that will be then brought to the.
Yeah, and I think we'll be okay. I think we can hopefully get that on the next, you know, the meeting that we have scheduled, and so we can talk about that meeting hopefully and then.
Okay.
For. It makes the, I'm sorry, before you said, the one other thing is we also, we have to look at the handbook language too to match up to the policy. So I just want to make sure. That handbook language we're talking about is match up to the policy, that the policy subcommittee is actually making. Sorry, I'm still, so I just want to make sure all those pieces, in fact. So we don't get to a point where we're voting on something and say, oh, shoot, it's still not working. So. Uh, yeah, I just want to share that. So it's, it was. Yeah, there was just some confusion and I'll take the ownership of the confusion, but. So I apologize for that.
Through the chair, I just want to. Ask. I'm confused on the timeline. When did this policy? When was this policy considered?
So, yeah. So it was one of, it was one of the policies that were, um, considered for some committee when there would be, uh. In the springtime.
Okay.
And then, um. When we, when we brought the policies to the full committee. Um, this is the one that we pulled back out and what happened at that point, when I put in for we consider issue, I brought one, so that's, that's where the. So.
Just.
I just want to make sure that we did, because it's an important policy and I want to make sure. But I want to make sure that we have. They all connect properly. I apologize for the confusion. So I think, um, that message is, um. I can't, which was some people want to meet towards the table or discussion.
Aren't you ready to vote?
Okay, I don't, I don't.
Good.
I don't know, whatever works for.
I think we're fine, Jen. You're, you're okay with that? Yeah, we don't need a motion.
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, um. So a little deja vu, um. So we received an email from the Friends of Marblehead Public Schools. Their board has unanimously voted to approve two thousand five hundred dollars worth of school supplies to each of our schools. And looking for a motion to accept this donation.
So.
So. All right, any discussion?
I, I just want to say thank you, um, and also, uh, when I, when I work with Jess. She wants to come, um. She's gonna work with the principals directly around what the supplies and, I'm sure, you know, just to see the exact what's needed. So I appreciate the donation. That's very generous. Twenty-five hundred dollars for each school.
Yeah.
Donation and I, I wholeheartedly appreciate it. And it's great to. See that, but show up for the schools directly to.
Yes. You're happily needed, friends. I like that.
Yes.
Awesome. Um, any other discussion? Okay, uh, we'll vote on it. Roll call, Jen.
In favor?
Henry?
Favor.
Kate?
In favor.
Al Williams in favor. So the motion passes four zero. Okay, um. I'm gonna ask, uh, Kate to discuss our school committee meeting dates for. The, our fiscal year.
Um, so there was a. Document in the Dropbox with those. Meeting dates, um. For the fiscal year. For the fast. For the fiscal year, for the vast majority of the months, they follow our typical practice of meeting on the first and the third Thursday. But I'll just point out the the places where that is different. In September, there's a third meeting listed for Tuesdays of some September thirtieth, excuse me, because the first Thursday in October is young for. Um, and then you'll see in October, um, October thirtieth is listed, that's actually the fifth Thursday, so it would. Be a placeholder if we decided that a meeting was necessary. Um, and then if you jump forward to January, January first is a Thursday. Um, so this schedule proposes just meeting on the second and fourth Thursdays that month. And then proposed to meet on Thursday, February twenty sixth, which is the fourth. Thursday in February, because the third Thursday is February break.
Can we, um, I publicly posted a meeting for August fourth.
Yeah, we can add that.
So we had that, please. Do we want to discuss whether? Um, I mean, we we're not going to, should we not hold a meeting on September? Thirtieth?
So another option would be. That instead of meeting on September thirtieth, we could shift the meeting dates in October, um. You know, on either the sixteenth and the thirtieth, or we could meet the second and fourth Thursdays in October, as we're doing in January. Um.
I I would vote for the six, as as written, the sixteen and the thirtieth, if if asked.
Yeah, I I am not available for the sixteenth, October sixteenth meeting, so I would prefer the other option, but it's, you know. Uh, I'm fine either remoting in or, I think, you know, if you're available to chair the the meeting in person.
I mean, it seems like it's a quick turnaround from the eighteenth, do you, are you? I mean, it's a quick turnaround between meetings, but on in September?
Uh, I'm just not gonna be here.
I'm not sure we necessarily need that meeting, but.
I'm sorry, Jim, what was that?
I just, I'm not sure why we would need three meetings in September and then two meetings in October, like, that's a quick turnaround, but.
Yeah, so I, would we be okay with just saying then not doing the?
That's typically.
The Tuesday, September, yeah, meeting twice a month, I think is important, but as you said, we're we're, we'll allow, we're not jeopardizing that for September or October. So I think we can.
That's fine, the only thing is that. You know, October second is two weeks after September eighteenth, and if we don't meet that week, then we're going a month. Basically, right from September eighteen to October sixteen, which might be fine, um.
Did you look at the yearly calendar at all, when you were doing this? Yeah, so, so you know, there are needs for, that's what I was wondering, if there would be needs for that kind of, to have that.
No, I said, I I again, I think the sixteenth and the thirtieth makes sense, I mean, we can always add one if we need to, I mean, there's always document, just because we have, I would rather sketch them out. This way, and then if we need to add an extra one, we could, um, um, yeah, I mean selfishly, I I I have some vacation time that I have scheduled in there, so I'm not gonna be. Around.
On the, on the thirtieth?
No, no, the thirtieth, no, the only days I'm I'm not here is in October, the second and. Possibly the ninth.
Yeah, I mean, we can't really have a school committee meeting, so. So.
Would it be possible to move the October, and this is being selfish, the October sixteenth meeting, October fifteenth, Wednesday?
It worked, I mean, that's, I like, again, just for me, the only, the second and the ninth just don't work for me, every every other eight on that calendar, I think, works for me, just those two have, have to.
January, it sounds like. Okay, so let's make that Wednesday, then October fifteen, please. We, back to. The three meetings in September, I think. Were we fine with waiting the eighteenth to the fifteenth now? I shortened it by a day, I was like.
Yeah, I mean, what if we leave it on there and as, you know, as we get into September, if it doesn't seem that there's enough. Business to warrant immediately, then we always have the option of not holding it, but at least we will have all reserved the time on our calendars.
And this is an item we need to vote, right, a voting item for us?
Um, can I just make one more comment?
No, okay, though we did last year.
Um, yeah, I mentioned to Kate when we were talking, um, and this is just another thing, I think when we do the school calendar, I think we do that on February. We can possibly do these dates at the same time would be really cool, because I think having these on the calendar for everybody at the same time is is preferable, but. Just a thought, I mean. And that that doesn't need to be decided, so I just want to probably, while we're talking about the calendar, but, um, this thing makes more sense. For future discussion.
Do you have? When is the last day of school, do we know? So we would be meeting.
I'm looking at the unit, because they usually, they usually have it right off the top of their head.
Well, I'm, so that last meeting will be after the last day of.
Without schedule right now, one season's twelve. Twelve fish, yeah. Yeah.
So that 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 may be after the last day of school, just.
It's the seventeenth.
Seventeen.
The seventeenth's last day, okay.
Without, without any snow days.
Seventeenth without.
So what is the twenty, the twenty fifth is the day marked on here is the one hundred and eighty, but you take all of the days, three hundred and eighty.
That seems late, I don't know why I had the twelve in my head. Seventeenth, yeah?
For students to stay, uh, with no snow days.
With no snow days. So no snow days, no heat days.
Yeah, twenty fifth, no snow days, yeah.
All right, so Kate, can you get those changes to John, and then John, you can have them posted on her.
Yep.
On her site, yeah, yeah.
So, I'm sorry, we're gonna keep this thirty?
They'll send you the edits, yeah.
And then the fifteenth on October.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got.
We're gonna add the fourth, eight, four.
Yep, I'll add that.
Yep.
October fifteenth, yeah. All right. All right.
And your fourth is at what time night?
Seven nine.
I gotta, I'll give him till he's in the world.
All right, um, so the next agenda item is continuing to work on filling our subcommittee and liaison and other. Uh, other uh teams, uh, rosters, um. So right now with uh subcommittee. Um, let me just back up for a second, because, um. It is part, you know, we we do now have an opening, right? And, um, it's fairly quick, I believe, the the process for for backfilling, uh, Mr. Oda. Um, and so just as we're thinking about this, you know, if there's nothing pressing on a particular committee, and we think we could wait. For, you know, a new member to potentially do that, that's a potential option. Okay. Um, so in terms of subcommittees, there's two openings now, I believe. Uh, one is for budget, uh, Trent is currently on that, uh, and there's an open position, and then on the communications subcommittee. Uh, I am on that, and now there's an opening because of this data.
Kate, can I ask, I'm sorry.
Sure, no, that's fine.
Um, the budget subcommittee, my recommendation was, it was you and Sarah was on before we vote, did we vote, Jenny? I don't, I just don't remember seeing that, um, I could be wrong.
Through the chair, it was my, I believe it was Sarah and Allison. And then we haven't voted anyone onto the budget subcommittee for the coming year.
I was just curious, I just didn't, I was looking through, I didn't.
Yeah, section.
I wasn't on the budget.
Yeah.
Oh, you're right, it was Alice, I I keep getting the negotiations, budget, um, but yeah, I don't, I don't think Jenny was on the budget one.
So, I believe that, you know, Jen's name is listed here, she had expressed interest, no, I did not, no, oh, that's. Was my understanding.
Um. So start with the budget. Yeah, um, Jen, I have a question if you don't mind, uh, so, you know, obviously this is very important, they're all important, but, you know, this is. Uh, I think it's better to have experience with this particular one, and you bring that up, obviously, because you've been on this budget committee for a little while now, or at least last year.
Um, I have been on it in the past.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's your, what's your thoughts around, uh, is it okay to have a less experienced member or? Just looking for your, your insight, perspective on that.
Um, probably not, but, I mean, somebody should, who's probably been on it before, but that's.
No one.
Were you one of the?
Sorry, can I make?
I'm happy to turn on it, don't get caught.
You know, I'm glad, I'm glad you're on, I mean, I'm sure you bring that continuity and, um. Yeah, I I would have no, I would have no problem, I'm just, you know, worried just about the. I will do it, yes, I will do it, John, I'm sorry, you got a comment?
I'm sorry, no, I was just, I I was thinking about the budget subcommittee, I don't, last year when I, when I first came here. Um, there was a lot of conversation about how frequently and how often and then who need to meet, and I think last year we were able to kind of have the. Budget subcommittee meeting, then bring the, oh, yeah, and have a conversation with that, bring it to the, the the full committee. And then the next meeting, we have the public, um, hearing on like, on the budget, and we go to the finance board, so, um. You know, I think there certainly is where you have to meet more frequently than that, um, if it's pretty straightforward, it's not a whole lot of extra stuff, I don't know that this. He didn't meet seven hundred times, um, you know, I I know this coming year and following year, we're probably gonna have to have, um, a few more conversations that we can. I just, I just make mention of it, because I think some year, I think the budget subcommittee is just one of those committees, that some years is gonna be more. Robust than others, um, so just whoever's on the committee just needs to, I can know that, um. But hey, I'm not, I'm not a report for meeting for the sake of having a bunch of meetings where we don't, so I need to, and I mean, obviously, we need to be there, um, last year's. So, I think really well, the way we crafted.
I think it's a different, um, budget season this year.
Correct, that's what I said, so.
What, you know, what we're facing, but the other thing is, we don't, we will, we do have an opening, so, I mean, the other option is you wait until, when you said it, but we want to wait until we have the.
That's what I was asking about, because that'll be a, a less experienced person, that's why I was asking my question.
Well, you don't know, we don't know who it's gonna be.
That's true.
It could be somebody who has finance experience.
Yeah.
Or FinCon experience, or.
Maybe a better question is, is there anything that needs to be done?
Generally, no, because it doesn't usually kick in till the, you know, fall, late fall, yeah, like, they don't, late October, November.
Okay, all right, well, I I guess I would propose we'll just leave it open then for now. Uh, we've got to remember, then we'll have another discussion.
Because there's also. Other, uh, Brian was on.
Communications.
Communications.
Insert subcommittee, so I think it's on some other liaison.
You have secret advisory.
Yeah, so we'll get to, I'll get to those.
Yeah.
Right. Um, oh, yeah, here it is, sorry.
And there's an opening on communications.
I'd be interested in drawing that, I think I have experience there. Something that I I I thought we could, have some ideas for ways we can improve things.
Okay, so anyone else have a, an interest?
Did you want to continue on the second?
So this might, what I was, uh, thank you, Kate, but what I was thinking is, I'll leave my name here for now, because this might be a good, a good thing for. I I don't think you need a, a whole bunch of experience in order to to do the things we're asking of the communications. So, uh, what I was thinking is, if there's no other interest, um, you know, we'll have Henry step in for Mr. Oda. Um, and then I will just leave my name here unless someone else is interested right now, and then, as we're looking at the, you know, maybe if I do. Become on the budget, you know, maybe open that up, ask if we step down from there, and we assign someone else there. Yeah, so any, anybody else, any other interest, communications? All right, um, I am looking for a motion to appoint Henry Bosta to our communications subcommittee. Any discussion? Uh, okay, roll call, uh, Jen?
In favor?
Henry?
Favor.
Kate in favor, Al in favor, uh, so the motion passes for zero. So I I don't have a lot of detail on this, but we were asked by our, uh, town planner, Alex. I'm not sure I spelled the last name correct, uh, for a representative for our committee to sit on the Marblehead Master Plan Committee. And I I believe, Jen, you had expressed interest in this.
Uh, I don't need to be on that.
Okay.
Doing a lot.
Yeah, so, okay, so, no, I'm glad we're bringing it up then, um.
Again, we have another person coming on board, I I don't know what, how pressing that is, I don't know.
Okay.
When that starts.
Okay. Unless, I mean, to me, unless, you know, there's a present member that really, oh, that would excite me, it's a passion of mine, I'd, I'd like to be that, that liaison. Otherwise, we'll, we'll wait, we okay with that?
I am, yes.
Okay.
Totally, and that open, Al, that's.
Yeah, we'll leave it. About to make sure when we're interviewing candidates, that they're gonna be on a lot of committees.
Well, it should be, Ethan, like, I mean, we, we should be on at least two.
No, it is important, that's why we're keeping it open, so we can, it allows us some balance. And I think there's, there's no issue if, you know, we want to, you know, we had already appointed two, if we want to make some changes, I think we could do that at that time, also via a vote of the committee. Uh, so there, there are a couple of superintendent advisories. Um, I think John, one you mentioned was the safety advisory that was held by Mr. Oda.
Yes. That was, just, just before you had the conversation, um, I'm planning a meeting quarterly for that, we were doing monthly, and the committee basically said that was kind of. A little bit more than needed, so we're gonna, by like, four, really, so for, for your education, we didn't think about if you want to be on that or not, and we just will be here at Brown. And it has, uh, members of school, me, myself, all the principals, Steve Biotech, Todd, uh, Whitehead, Francis, it's on it. Chief Police, Fire Chief, um, so I was there, Tower School and the Charter School, so just so you know, who's on the.
I would be interested in.
Okay. Any other interest? All right, uh, I'd like, uh, for a motion to appoint, uh, Kate. Uh, to the safety advisory. The safety advisory team.
So moved.
Okay, any discussion, further discussion?
Had a second, I wasn't.
Was that?
I don't think there was a second.
Yo, you moved it, okay, I will second it. Uh, thank you, Kate, um. Roll call, uh, Jen?
In favor.
Henry?
In favor.
Kate?
In favor.
Al in favor, so the motion passes by four to zero vote. Okay. Uh, John, I know you were looking into the health wellness advisory.
Yeah, I did get very far with that, I apologize, I I couldn't find anything where is like, that there was listed as members, uh, no one seems to have, like.
We haven't met in years, which one is required to do?
Which is probably why, so I will, I will look to establish that, I just need to find out, I gotta figure out who the member is supposed to be.
But you do need a school committee member.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's fine, so if anyone wants to be, that's, that's your job, sorry.
That brings up a point about membership to advisory, so I was looking at the policies, and I saw that there was something added to the drug about. Sort of the difference between subcommittee policies, I mean.
We're gonna discuss that a little bit.
This is a superintendent's advisory committee.
Yeah, it's not a school committee advisory, it's a good, it's a good question, it's there, it's different. But it does have to be, uh, there does need to be one school committee member. On the team. Um, and then there's some, uh, liaison assignments, um. I'd like to continue with Metco unless someone else, uh, would like to serve in that capacity. All right, um, the liaisons, Jen, whether it was voted on last year or the meeting?
Um, I don't think we voted committees, so, or as the liaison, we just all agree, you know, what we're gonna do is my recollection.
All right, uh, and then there's, uh, CPAC, uh, which was formerly held by Mr. Oda.
I'm happy to join that one, actually. I've met a lot of great people in the community who are interested, but.
Okay. Um. Is there anyone else interested? Okay, um, looking for a motion to appoint Henry, Henry to our CPAC liaison. As our, as our CPAC liaison.
So moved.
Okay, um, any further discussion?
So I'll second it.
Any now, any further, I just want to second, rip it by the seconded, um. Roll call, Jen?
Favor.
Henry?
Favor.
Kate?
In favor.
Al in favor.
So if you voted the CPAC, you should probably vote.
Yeah, you're right, I just, all right, um. Someone like to make a motion to appoint Al to the, uh, the the Metco liaison?
Someone.
Second.
Right, I can proceed, right?
Yes, got it.
Roll call, Jen?
Favor.
Henry?
In favor.
Kate?
In favor.
Al in favor. Okay. Um.
Mister Chairman, sorry, um.
Yes.
Did we decide on that school committee for the health and wellness advisor that I'm gonna create? Or are we gonna wait on that until I create?
Um, I believe we were waiting on that one.
Yes, I'm just trying to make sure.
Yeah. It's still pending.
Well, you will need a school committee member.
Correct.
So.
Yes.
That we do definitely need.
Yeah, definitely keep it on our, to be done, to be determined. Okay, so, um, one thing I wanted to discuss, and, and Harry is kind of. A good gateway, uh, around it is. We have policies around subcommittees and we have policies around advisory committees, school committee advisory committees. And there are some differences, uh, between the two. Um. So typically an advisory committee is absurd. It's, it's really, you look at it as a task force. And I'm, I'm reading this right from our policy manual that's on our website. Um. And it's to provide continuing consultation in a particular area of activity. And why it's sometimes used more than a subcommittee is because the membership is more, you know, you could more broadly representative. And you could take into consideration specific tasks that, uh, you need from both the committee or maybe from subject matter experts. Or if you want, uh, community members. Um. Now. The appointment of a subcommittee. Um. It, it wasn't very clear around whether they needed to be a school committee member or not. So I just wanna turn it over to, to Kate because she followed up with M A S C around this particular question and has a little guidance around it.
So the, our policy. Says members shall be appointed annually. Um, and I had a conversation with Glenn Kuchar at M A S C. Who said that the way that operates is that subcommittees are consisted. Assist of school committee members sort of doing more detailed work on behalf of the committee and then reporting back to the full committee. And that when the committee wants to involve a broader range of individuals in that process. That's why the advisory committee option exists, and so that's what would be appointed. If we wanted people beyond school committee members to be participating in subcommittee type activities.
So the, as I was reading, thank you, Kate. So as I was reading this and hearing about this. It seemed to me that, uh, you know, we have a very big project right now with our roof, with the high school roof. And when I read the differences between what a subcommittee is and an advisory committee is, it appears that. It would be, it, it might be a good idea to use an advisory committee for the roof project, right? So it would include s- school committee members, and I would suggest those that are serving on the facilities team. But then it could also have other members, right? Again, as I said, subject matter experts, community membership, et cetera. So, uh, I guess I would just like to bring that up, up for us to discuss as a committee. As to whether that might make more sense versus having the facilities committee manage what they're supposed to do and. Uh, a significant project that we have going on right now.
Did, John, did you weigh in on this?
Did not. Um. I think. I guess, right?
Yeah, that would be.
I think, um, I think so. I would agree that the advisory committee a lot would allow for, you know, the broader group, which may, may be indicated, um, I think. The roof advisory committee, I mean, if it's necessary, yeah, I, I don't know. I'm not convinced it's a hundred percent necessary to do that. But I guess my bigger question is if we develop this committee, like, I think part of the discussion is who's actually chairing that? Who's supposed to be chairing it? Cause I, you know, it's my understanding that like. Like, if I was, ended up kind of running a meeting in a day, which isn't what it's supposed to be. I know this, we just need to tighten that kind of stuff up. So I think that's. I, I don't know what the answer is to that, but that's part of the consideration is like, who's actually charged with forcing it, chairing it. Running it, doing the agenda for that kind of. It's clear to me that a subcommittee has, you know, the school.
The, this, the, so the policy does. Address that, and the school committee would be the entity. Appointing the. Chair of that team. Of the advisory team.
And then, and then the school committee appointing the chair, that, would that chair always be one of the school committee members? Or is that up to the chair? Is that a school committee member?
I'm, I'm not sure. Is the policy specific around that?
It's not specific as to that. It doesn't even. I don't think speak to a chair.
But I, I think, I think, I'm not prepared to discuss this too much, but I. This was gonna be. Discuss, so I think.
Don't see.
I'll see.
Anything about, um. A chair. Cause again, I think it's a. Advisory.
Yeah, which is fine. I just think it's one of those things where. That's what we get into, making sure to be, who's actually running it. Is in charge of it. Who's managing it, because. Sorry, say.
Alright, um.
We open this discussion.
Yeah, we're, yeah.
Thanks.
I think. That this is the appropriate mechanism to use if it's the will of the committee to get advice from. People beyond. School committee members and our employees as we move through this. Process. Um, and in my opinion, that's. What we. That's what I would like to see us do. I think that, you know, there are individuals in our community who have come forward and expressed interest in giving. Their opinions or sharing their guidance with the committee, and instead of. That being. Happening in an ad hoc way or simply occurring during public comment. At school committee or facility subcommittee meetings, you know, setting up an advisory committee, keeping it small and tight and workable. To me seems like. Maybe go without. Getting. That advice if that's. What the committee.
Yeah, I agree. And John, to, to address your concerns, maybe this is something we can talk about in the, in the upcoming. Facility subcommittee meeting with Mike and just, you know, I'd love to hear his concerns. We can, we don't wanna slow down the project at all. I'm just asking. Everybody for their feedback, but I think there are a lot of people in the community. Have a lot of expertise that we could leverage and, and to get them involved and help this project run a little more smoothly. Uh.
I think, yeah, I think that's, I think the facility subcommittee is the place to have a conversation and see what makes sense. I mean. You know, yes, it's great to have subject matter experts kind of weighing in, but we also, I just want to be very mindful of, yes, maybe some of us says, I know all about roofs. But they may be commercial ones or, I mean, you know, maybe owners. So we, we just have to be cautious of that. And, and again. Procurement laws. Prescribe how we go through a project. So, and we just have to be sure that however we operate these committees, they dovetail with the. With what, what's required by the law. So I just, that's, that's my only caution. I just wanna make sure that we just don't get bogged down. Like, oh, we didn't ask. Joe Smith, cause he knows, he knows about this product thing, and we didn't ask, you know, that's great, but I also, I think, just. Again, I think what we should, so if we're starting, I guess I would preface this by saying, if we're starting a roof project now. By creating a committee with all sorts of, um. Words on it is the way to go. I think we're so far the means of the project. I just don't wanna. Start creating committees that, that bog us down. Yes, I don't want, I do not wanna run off that timeline. I mean. This is the first major project that this team is working on, the new administrative team, and I'll make sure we stay on task. So that's all I'm saying. So. I agree with you, but I also want to just, it's a health cautionary call.
I think if we do an advisory committee for this, we, it should have nothing to do with the facilities subcommittee. Is what.
I was gonna say, shared membership potentially.
I don't really, I don't have desire. I, I can't be doing both. That facilities and this, I, like.
I, I, I do, is I think the facilities subcommittee is doing this work already.
Well, then we should do it. And if we're not gonna do it, and we're gonna have an advisory committee, because this will be an advisory committee to the school committee. So it's just one more step. It would be an advisory, I don't know where the facilities committee would fit in with this. Honestly, I'm not, I mean, I honestly don't. Cause it's an advisory committee to the school committee. She would be fine. Uh, and that, that the school committee would make. Decisions and vote. Um, and it. It's sort of an unnecessary. Uh, stop along the way to have to. I don't know what, I don't know what. It's all would be with the facilities.
That, to me, and, and I, you know, how we've done in the past is.
I've never worked on an advisory.
But I guess when I look at, uh, you know, facilities committee charter, right, is an annual review of the yearly facilities plan. Capital outlays and long-term facilities needs. Right? So I think while you have an advisory committee for a big project, is you're not. That team is focused just on that, where the facilities, subcommittee is focused on more, to me, a little more strategic items. And so it's, it's bifurcating things just to make it more efficient, I, I view it as.
Yeah, so my point is, if we go with this committee, this advisory committee, we have nothing to do with this facility subcommittee. That's what I don't, I mean, I don't see where.
Except I think there's been people attending the facility subcommittee that. You know, like the O P Ms have been at the facility, I, I believe, right, have been at some of the facility subcommittee.
Yeah, so now you're causing more work than, you know, twice as many meetings. So that's what I need, like. In other words, then they wouldn't need to come to the facility subcommittee. It would be to the advisory committee and the advisory committee and the school committee, and it just. Bypasses the facility subcommittee. I don't, seriously, I don't. Know why.
So.
What, what would that look like then?
I think it's an opportunity to involve some community members, if, you know, if in a way that they can participate in the, in the facility subcommittee meetings. Uh. And, and, and you're right, maybe it's not related to the facility subcommittee, and it's, it's just, I mean, I'm happy to, to join that committee if we form it. Um. But, uh, yeah, I, I, the point taken, I think.
Yeah, I think a lot of it has to do with, to me at least, what's pivotal is. You know, this, the subcommittee. And that membership. Right? Because if you need community, uh, involvement, that's really, doesn't seem to fall, may not fall under what subcommittee should be. They should have. Two members that are school committee members. Now. We are meeting. Uh, Monday with both M A S C. And legal. I'm wondering if that might be, I mean, those are two, two good entities. That we can let them know just what's happening and what, you know, based on their experience with other districts, what other, how, you know. You know, they would recommend that this would, should be done, given, you know, governance.
I think that's a good idea. I think that decision we have to make is. Is there value in involving? If we decide there is. That this is the kind of call with which they participate.
I think it's great. I think it would be great to have it. But again, to commit to the school committee, and then the school committee would make, would vote, which is what we have to do anyway. Whether it's the, you know, the bidder, all of those things are gonna have to be voted by the school committee and ultimately the select board, so. Uh.
The good, the good thing about establishing a committee like that for, so like the roof project, and then. You know, saying, hey, we're gonna be great to happen for, like, here now. So like, how do we move forward? So. I would, I would concur with Jen that like, maybe separating it. I see that, I see that your point out, is maybe if we have a separate, it might be. Better, because then it's kind of straight, I think, it was pretty wide in the conversations. It allows for the, what, you know, some people that are already giving their input, and I think, yeah, probably valuable, but, but then it, it more importantly streamlines it. That committee then says, here's our recommendation to the school committee, you guys is both. It takes the, I think, I think I am agree with Jen, like, having the facilities and the other one, like, who's doing a lot, and they. Um, so I think facilities, I think to your point out, is kind of, you know, there's a bunch of facilities of going on, right? And then this, for, gonna develop the roof when they focus only on that, and it's a short-term, meaning it's whatever until, until we get to a point where we don't need it, and then just dissolve it. So. I don't, I think it's a good idea, just how we operationalize it.
So it sounded like I saw some. Some agreement. Let's, maybe we can discuss it on. Monday, and, you know, because we'll have, I think legal and an A S C S representatives that could provide some insight. Or some perspective and background that we can take into account or not. Alright.
Before we move off of subsidies. Um. In kind of looking. Back to try and understand. What had happened around some of these subcommittees. There isn't a whole lot of information available. And so I wanted to make a motion. That all of our subcommittees take the following steps this year to just sort of help make sure that we have consistency. Um, of practices and clear records. And so there's three, I'm moving that we take three steps. One. Set regular meeting schedule and communicate that schedule back to the chair. For September first. Two, create and approve meeting minutes as part of the subcommittee's regular business practices. Then three, provide the full committee with a monthly written update on subcommittee activities. And.
For a motion.
I made.
Yeah.
Discussion?
I don't disagree. I think the written update is. You know, we do give verbal updates. I think that should be sufficient. I mean, there's a lot of work going on here. Um. But it's just my thought.
I was not envisioning, you know, a lengthy written update, and actually, if, if the plan is to continue with. The school committee newsletter, the subcommittees are generating brief written updates, you know, that's just. Newsletter content. You know, ready, ready to go, so. Don't wanna create a lot of extra work for anyone, certainly.
Do we wanna? I don't wanna water it down too much, but to just say, you know, we do expect a regular. For weeks, we. One of the responsibilities is a monthly. Uh, communication update to the school committee. Versus, you know, saying right, and someone's thinking, you know.
Mm-hmm.
A very sophisticated.
Yeah.
Twelve-page document.
So I think you're amending the motion?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay. Alright, so we just changed the written to, uh, monthly. Monthly communication updates to the school.
And just to be clear, this is not a policy. This is a.
Nope.
I don't know what it is.
Practice for the years.
Okay, um. We'll do a roll call, um, Jen?
Favor.
Henry? Eight?
In favor.
Al in favor. Uh, motion passes for zero. Okay, um.
There was a curriculum and collective bargaining, but we're not.
We're just not playing it this time.
I don't think we ever actually. Formed a curriculum subcommittee. I believe we voted not to do that specifically this year.
That's my recommendation. And then we talked about collective bargaining, where they only need to.
Yeah, collective bargaining usually is, um. As soon as all contracts are signed, they sort of is, um. Um, goes away. I don't know. It's for, it's for that, that's.
Okay. Uh. Alright, um. Closing business. Is there any new business? Or correspondence? Alright, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Alright, roll call, Jen?
In favor.
Henry?
Favor.
Kate? Al in favor. We are adjourned. Thank you.